Good evening, everybody. We're going to get started. So, welcome. It's Monday, September 9, 2019. This is a joint meeting on affordable housing. So, I want to welcome everybody. Thank you for coming out. It's a chance for us to come together, to sit, to listen. And just remember, this is the beginning of the process. So, come with open minds and let's have a talk tonight. So, I just want to say welcome. This is the City of South Haven. We have the South Haven Charter Township. We have the South Haven Housing Commission. And our presenter, Mr. Ryan Kilpatrick. Thank you for coming back. We loved you the first time, so we're looking forward to having you back tonight. First, order of business, we have to call the meeting to order. So, we have three boards. We need to call the order. I will start, but I defer it to my friends at the South Haven Charter Township, Mr. Ross DeCalmis, to order.
I'll call my board meeting to order.
Thank you very much. Mr. DeCarmis, how's it going?
Yeah, on behalf of the South Haven Housing Commission, I call this meeting to order.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the South Haven City Council, I call this meeting to order. Before we start the meeting, we actually have a guest. Mr. Kevin Conklin is the new undersheriff for Van Buren County. So, I don't know if he's come up yet. He gets to introduce himself. That was all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Conklin. I just started this position two weeks ago, as you probably read the newspaper. I'm retired from the state police after 24 years. Been all over the state, up in Saginaw. I've been in Bridgman as a detective sergeant, went to Hawke'sburg as a detective sergeant. Worked on cold case homicide. Some of you have probably seen me on the Discovery ID channel. Banco homicide that I did a few years back. Then recently, I ran the future better pension unit, which was a lot of fun, but time flew on and on. I'm originally from Decatur, born and raised there. So, I've been a Van Buren County resident since I was alive. Look forward to meeting and working with all of you. Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay.
Folks, thanks for coming out tonight. I recognize just about all of you. My name is Brian Seth. I'm the city manager for the City of South Haven. And I, with sincerity, want to thank you all for coming out and spending a beautiful evening inside the building, talking about affordable housing. The thing that I want to stress to all of you is just a couple of expectations. We are not going to fix everything tonight. Sorry. We are going to make major strides. And what you're seeing tonight is the first step in a joint partnership between the City of Township and the Housing Commission. The thing I want to stress to all of you is this will be a process. We will be meeting again in the near future. And we will continue meeting as we work towards solutions. The other thing I need to stress is if you have questions, if you wish to participate in the conversation, I need you to speak as loudly as possible, so we can all hear, and so that the people with notepads over in these areas can jot down your name and information. If you come up and speak, please state your name, take your address, and we will do our very best to jot that down. We will be keeping minutes. We are recording this session. You can find all of that information on the city's website. And we will be sharing that with the township and the housing commission as well. Again, speak as loudly as you can. If you have a question about any of the logistics, don't be shy about finding me, finding the city staff. We are here to help. Now, with all of that said, we have Mr. Ryan Kilpatrick. Ryan has been down here before. Many of you will remember that he stood at this spot giving a talk on affordable housing as part of the Thursday Night Speakers Series. Ryan and his team are back, and they will be working with us over the coming months on a series of deliverables. So, with all that said, I want all of you to wish a warm welcome to Mr. Ryan Kilpatrick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here tonight. So, quickly, what I want to do is give you an overview of what we're going to try to accomplish tonight. And to let you know that you're going to have some opportunity to help us decide how long we're here tonight and how you want to engage and interact. So, what you'll see on the agenda right now is currently, we're planning to break into small groups at the end of this evening. And I'm going to gauge your response to kind of what we talked about early in this process. And I'm going to look to you to tell me, do you want to be in small groups, or do you want to just have casual conversation? I'm open either way. The reason I tell you that on the front end is because sometimes when we break into small groups, half of the audience leaves. So, I know how awkward that can feel sometimes, and I don't want to put you in that position. But I do want to give you a lot of opportunity to provide feedback. We're going to talk to you a little bit, and then we're going to ask you to respond and give us some of your feedback. So, I want to make sure we're doing that in the most comfortable way for everybody in the room possible. So, broadly, the purpose of tonight is simply to set a baseline. Is to start to talk about what is the housing market today in the South Haven area, both in the city and the township? How did we get here? What are the constraints? And then what are some of the things that we know we need to build over the short and medium term? And how do we get to building some of those things? So, I'm going to run through maybe 15 or 20 minutes of information. And then we have some partners from Integrated Architecture that are going to come up. And they're going to show you a handful of building types that we have worked on collaboratively, and they have worked on independently in other housing markets. And we're going to ask for your feedback to those building types and figure out, are they too tall, or too short, or too urban, or too rural? And try to gather your feedback into those building types, so that you all can inform what we do when we begin to design actual projects. What we don't want to do is bring you building designs and project designs that you say, well, this isn't South Haven. Thanks for putting all that work in, but it's not us. We want you to see your input in those designs. So, that being said, is it possible to turn off this bank of lights? Yeah. Hopefully, that's... Ooh, okay. A little mood. There we go. All right. So, South Haven is one of many, 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 many markets across the United States that are experiencing a housing crunch today. You're reading this in national headlines, you're reading it in state headlines, and you're also reading it at the local level. Brian Seth, the city manager, informed me that the local news has picked up the fact that we're doing this tonight. And it's because it's a common issue, right? This isn't just a one-off scenario. A lot of people are dealing with this. And so, what I want to be clear about is what are all of the things that are impacting whether or not an individual can afford housing? And simply, it's all of these things and more. It's hard to get financing for certain kinds of projects, especially when we're trying to build those projects at affordable prices for the right consumers. Construction is about as expensive as it has been in a very, very, very long time. There are a lot of reasons for that. Materials have gone up, the cost of labor has gone up. And frankly, I want to be clear about the fact that a higher cost of labor is good for the local economy, right? We want to be paying those workers living wage jobs. But that is also impacting how much it costs to own a home, or how much it costs to build a new apartment. NIMBY neighbors. How many people know the term NIMBY?
Ooh, like half.
So, that's an acronym for Not in My Backyard. Very often, we have a lot of folks who say, you know what? We need more housing. It's a super important issue. And the minute it gets proposed on their block, or in their neighborhood, or near to their home, it's a very different attitude. And as a homeowner myself, I understand that. It's a very rational perspective. And part of the rationale behind that is there were decades and decades that both government and for-profit organizations built housing developments badly. And they had poor social outcomes. They created concentrated pockets of poverty. They were the result of racialized segregation. And a lot of people say, you know what? We shouldn't repeat those mistakes of the past. And I agree. But it doesn't mean that we can't build new projects well, and we can't do them equitably across the community. There are opportunities to do those things. So, part of tonight is about thinking through, what are the sentiments that create a fear of change, or a fear of something new? And how do we begin to unpack those things and discover what are we willing to do together in order to solve some issues, both of collaboration and communication? So, wages is the other thing. Wages is frankly beyond my control. It's not something that I anticipate we're going to solve here tonight. But it's an important element to the overall cost of housing. As housing has risen more than 30% over the last decade, wages have only risen about 3% over that same period of time. And so, we're getting this yawning gap between what people are actually making and what it costs them to live in their own communities. Risk-reward is one of the last ones that's important to understand. So, very often, I hear folks who are strong housing advocates say, well, why doesn't the developer just do this? Right? It makes so much sense. And the answer to that tends to be, there's too much risk there and not enough potential reward, right? And that's not to say that the developer is being overly greedy. It's to say that they're making a calculation, right? What are the odds that they're going to get a return on their investment? Or more accurately, that their investors will get a return on their investment? And what are the risks that they want? And in a particular neighborhood, or a particular housing market, with a particular product type, they have to sort of weigh the pros and cons and decide, are my investors going to get their money back with a rate of return better than just putting those dollars in the savings account? And if they can't confidently say yes, then it's likely that they'll say no to the project. And so, we've got to understand those market dynamics and how housing gets financed today as we begin to think about what are the solutions and what are our opportunities to build more housing. So, one of the important factors for us to all kind of be in agreement about is the definition of affordability. Affordable to me could be different than affordable to somebody else in the audience. We may all have slightly different perceptions of affordability. But the way that the federal government defines it, the way that most nonprofits define it, the way that, I'm liking on his name, there's a great guy who does financial counseling nationwide. They all say that you shouldn't spend more than 30% of your income on housing. And when you start to spend more than 30% of your gross income on housing, you begin to sacrifice things like having a healthy savings account, like saving for college tuition for your kids, like putting enough money away for retirement, or frankly, paying groceries and medical bills, right? There are some households that are spending 50% of their income on housing, and they're choosing not to go to the drugstore to buy their prescriptions, or they're choosing not to eat breakfast in the morning, right? And so, we've got to recognize and wrestle with the fact that we do have households that are struggling. And we also, all of us, don't want to spend more on housing than we have to. And yet, we want to have safe, decent, and affordable housing in our own communities for us and for our neighbors. So, what you're seeing here are examples, depending on what you earn. What I have put here, these earning amounts are based on the area median income in Van Buren County. So, area median income in Van Buren is $51,800. And that means the middle income, of all the incomes across the county, the middle one is $51,800. So, half of the population earns less than that, and half of the population earns more than that.
Is that a family income, or is it an individual?
That is an individual income. So, what happens then is if you earn 50% of the area median income, you're earning about $26,000 a year, and your affordable rent or housing cost is $650 a month. If you're earning that area median income, your affordable rent or housing cost is about $1,300. And if you're earning about 120% of the area median income, you're earning $62,000 or about $1,500 a month. Or your housing budget is $1,500 a month. So, we're going to talk in a minute about what you can actually buy in the marketplace today for those dollar amounts. So, at this area median income, meaning you're the middle income earner in the county, your maximum affordable rent is $1,300. So, what can you actually afford? If we were to build a brand-new today, what can we afford? You can afford a one-bedroom apartment. That is possible in today's finance market. You might be able to afford a new two-bedroom apartment. This is about the cost to build a new two-bedroom apartment. This is roughly what the rent is going to be. A three-bedroom apartment is probably out of your budget, if you're earning that middle income today in South Haven. So, when, very often, when we talk about $1,200 a month for rent, I hear folks saying, well, geez, $1,200 a month for rent, why don't they just buy a house? And to me, that's indicative of the fact that a lot of people don't recognize the other financial burdens that a lot of people are saddled with. Whether it's due to debt, or old medical bills, or any number of issues. They may have poor credit. Thinking through and solving for those is not always the easiest of tasks. But there are opportunities to do that. So, once again, as we talk about the cost of housing, what we're talking about when you own your home, it's not just your principal payment, but it's also your interest payment, and it's also your taxes, and it's also your insurance. When you add all of those things up together, you can't spend more than roughly $1,300 a month. And that translates to a house that costs about $200,000. So, in today's market, what can we actually build for $200,000 a month? Or what can you find in the marketplace? You can find an existing home that needs work in the South Haven area for below $200,000. You cannot find an existing home that has been nicely refurbished for below $200,000. I took a snapshot on Zillow this morning. $300,000. If it's been well refinished, even if it's 100 years old, it's a $300,000 house. New construction, also not possible, right? We're not seeing those products in the marketplace today at below $200,000. So, this is today's starter room. And I just want to be clear about this, because I know that a lot of us own our homes for a long time. And if you haven't been in the housing market for a while, you forget that the market has changed dramatically since the last time you bought a house. Or since you were in the market for your first home, right? I remember my parents bought their first home, which is kind of a nice, like, smallish suburban home, for like $115,000. And I remember them really having to stretch to spend $115,000 when I was in fifth or sixth grade. So, today, that price has almost doubled, roughly 20 years later. And what you get is a 1,200-square-foot home decently finished by a reputable builder on a nice piece of property. But this is not affordable to your average income earner in the South Haven area. They're not going to buy a new starter room. And so, there are a couple of things that this tells us. One of the things that it tells us is that we are in a different market than we were in in the 1980s and 1990s, right? Those of you that remember when the baby boomers were all in the market for brand-new houses, we were building them like crazy. It was cheap to build. There were construction crews everywhere. And you could build them relatively inexpensively. And middle-class families were buying those new houses. Today, new construction houses are not going to middle-class families. They are mostly going to income earners who are earning roughly $75,000 a year. So, all of that being said, it's important to recognize, and these are talking points that I'm actually stealing from another organization. This is a national organization with strong talents. If you haven't read some of their blogs, I highly recommend it. It's a market-based organization. But they really dig into the numbers and talk through and carefully explain how a lot of this works in the marketplace. But these are important things for us to keep track of. First, developers do not pay the construction costs. You, the buyers, do, or the renters, right? All of those costs have to get passed on. If the developer is just funding and financing those costs without being able to pass those on to the consumer, they're losing money and they won't do another project. Housing demand is regional. So, we can talk about a project in the City of South Haven, and that project will have an impact on the township, and it will have an impact on the broader community. And the same is true in reverse, right? If we do projects in the township, those projects will have an impact on price in the city. And depending on the size of the project, that impact may be minimal, or it may be significant. I don't know if there's an interesting speaking sound. We're going to learn. So, local zoning. This is the one, so my organization is primarily built to help local communities think about their zoning ordinances and how those ordinances are impacting the cost to build. Very often, and the Home Builders Association is in the audience tonight, there's a national report out that says, on average, local regulatory burdens add 25% to the cost of new construction. And so, that's everything from minimum lot sizes, to setbacks, to minimum floor area requirements, minimum storage spaces. I've seen township ordinances, not here, in other communities, that require a minimum of 120 square feet of storage space in any apartment. Right? And so, that's drywall, and studs, and electrical outlets that cost money. And so, they add cost to the overall cost of the building. So, if your zoning ordinance is calling for expensive units, developers have no choice, even if they're nonprofit developers, but to build expensive units. And so, we've really got to look at those zoning standards and think about, what can we unpack? What can we set aside? What are provisions that we put in place 30 years ago and can't remember why? And can we take those out and modify those for the future? Housing costs are less affordable if transportation is expensive. So, what I want you to think about is, very often, when we talk about the cost of housing, what we're negating is, what does it cost to get to your house from work? Or what does it cost to get to work from your house? And if it means that all of the adults in your house have to own a car, well, that house just became a lot more expensive because of the location that it's in. If your high school son or daughter can't walk to school, and suddenly, you have to be able to buy them a car in order for them to get to school, that house just became more expensive to you, right? It didn't add value on your tax statement, and it's not going to sell for any more when you're ready to sell it. But it is costing you more money to live in that location, because you can't get around the community in any other way than to drive. And that's going to be the case for generally every adult in the household. And this is another issue that has been building up for decades, that is self-created in terms of the way that we prioritize transportation funding. But it's something we've got to recognize is built in to our expenses, everyone. And there are opportunities to build in, opportunities for other mobility choices. For our sons and daughters to walk to school, for dad maybe to walk to work. There is some beauty in the fact that Meyer now delivers groceries to your front door, right? I mean, there are some opportunities there that we can leverage and think about. And the last thing at the bottom, if you can't see that, is today's affordable housing is the last generation's luxury house. So, very often, and we're seeing this more acutely now than almost ever, is those older buildings that haven't been rehabbed in the last decade or so tend to be more affordable than brand-new construction. And that's been the case for thousands of years. For as long as we've been building cities, those older buildings that have received less attention are less expensive. And so, we've got to recognize those buildings as opportunities, right? So, not always in order to achieve affordability are we going to build brand-new buildings. Sometimes, we're going to update and refurbish existing buildings, because that's less expensive. Sometimes, we're going to build new buildings and just carve out a percentage of those units as attainable or affordable to the workforce. But not assume that every unit in that building is going to be for deep, low-income residents, maybe just a handful. Because what we've got to recognize is the cost of construction is always higher today than it was 10 or 15 years ago. It's the natural law of inflation. And hopefully, that continues to be the case, right? If we experience a period of dramatic deflation, we're all in trouble. So, we want to assume that those costs and values continue to grow. So, the two things that my organization does, and I think that we are all capable of doing collectively, is fixing local zoning to allow more supply to get built. And what I want to recognize here again is that new supply that gets built is going to be relatively expensive. But what it does is it begins to put a cap on the inflationary pressure of price. So, think about for a second, if you've got 10 homes on the market that are all for sale, and you've got 100 buyers in the market that all want to buy a house, which of those 100 buyers are most likely to buy one of those 10 houses? The guy with the most money, or the gal with the most money, right? So, that means 90 out of those 100 people are out of luck, right? Because the 10 people with the most money and the most ambition decided that they were going to buy those 10 houses. So, well, what if we build another 10 houses, but they're all expensive? Well, likely, what happens is those 10 people with the most money take the 10 most expensive houses. And that means that the other 10 houses are left for the next 10 folks, right? And so, this doesn't solve for the issue of affordability overnight. It takes a generation. It takes 30 years. For what, honestly, folks, that is trickle-down economics, right? Whether you believe in it or not, that's essentially what I'm saying. It works, but it works over a very long period of time. And so, what we have to recognize is if you want affordability today, you pay for affordability today. And so, the second role here is we need, after we build enough supply to satisfy market demand, then we have to recognize how much of the market is not being served by that new supply, because they can't afford it. And what are the additional investments that we need to make as a community in order to make sure that those folks can be in safe, warm, and affordable housing without having to live on streets, or without having to double up in family matters? And so, these are the two simplest ways that we can solve for this problem, right? Is, one, to allow the market to build enough housing to satisfy demand. And, two, to understand where the market isn't actually serving our community well. And then we step in and think about, what are all of the ways that we can influence more production at greater levels of affordability? So, one of the things that we're going to talk a little bit about tonight is the Overton site. And that's at the corner of Elkenburg and Indiana. And that's one of many sites. Brian sent me a list of a handful of sites all across the township that we can also consider for the long term, if the township feels like that is a good opportunity. But we're going to let you all and let their board tell us what are our priorities. So, what I want, this is going to be one of the last things I say, and then I'm going to have Mike Corby from Angry Art Architecture come up and talk a little bit about building typology. Because again, I want you to help inform us about what are the kinds of buildings that you want to see in your neighborhoods and your communities. But these are all of the factors, and there's probably more that I haven't been able to come up with. But these are most of the factors I could come up with that go into the cost of development. Land, utilities, roads, materials, materials being lumber, and drywall, and appliances, and all those things. Labor, the people who build, financing. I want you to think about for a second, if we build a $10 million project, and it's financed fully at a 5% interest rate, your interest rate is a half-million dollars, right? The developer is going to spend a half-million dollars on interest for a $10 million project. Who pays for that half-million dollars? But the buyers, right, or the renters. The developer doesn't eat that cost. So, the cost of finance is directly attributable to the cost of rent or the cost of homeownership. And then professional fees, right? We've got talented folks who work on these projects. They also earn a living, and we've got to make sure that those folks are paid in the process. So, what's important to think about, on a, let's say it's a $10 million project, is how do we disperse that cost, right? So, if we know we're going to spend $10 million, do we want to spend $10 million on 10 homes? Or do we want to spend $10 million on 100 homes? Because if we know we have a relatively fixed cost, it will go up with a greater number of units. But some of the things that are fixed are the cost of land, right? I can buy a piece of dirt for a relatively fixed price, whether I put 10 houses on it or 100 houses on it. The cost of extending utilities. I'm going to dig a trench, and I'm going to put pipe in the ground. It may be bigger if I build more housing units. But most of that cost is in the labor and the excavation. So, if I'm going to put in utilities, do I want to serve 10 units, or do I want to serve 100 units? And these are big extrapolations, right? Maybe it's a 10-unit versus a 15-unit difference, right? But you see where I'm going with this cost calculation, is as we get more efficient with our use of land, and we get more efficient with the way that we install utilities, and how many users are helping to pay for those costs of installation, we are incrementally bringing down the overall cost to the end buyer and end renter. And so, if we are to say that our ideal neighborhood is single-family homes on a quarter of an acre, what we are also saying is that we have an ideal price point. Because those single-family homes on a quarter acre demand a certain cost in terms of land, and utilities, and all the professional fees and financing. Those are fixed costs. So, what we've got to really be thinking about is what are our priorities for the community? And that's where I'm going to be asking for your input, because we have to balance these two things. We don't want to dramatically change your community so that you don't recognize it anymore in 30 years. But we also don't want to have a community that in 30 years, half of this room can't afford to live in anymore. And so, what we really need to think through is, what are the pros and cons of adding a little bit more density? Of leveraging that infrastructure and those roads? And how do we define density? How does it look? How does it feel? What is the neighborhood like? How much park space is it? All of those things are going to be important components of this conversation, both tonight and both tonight and going forward. But what I also want you to think about is where the market is headed. So today, 60% of buyers, both millennials and baby boomers, who are the two largest generations ever to be participants in the housing market, 60% of buyers are asking for more walkable amenity-rich communities. If all other things are equal, if the neighborhood is safe, whether it's a walkable or a suburban community, if the schools are good, whether it's a walkable or a suburban community, 60% of buyers want the walkable community. And they're willing and frankly, sometimes glad to give up the obligation of owning their lawn. Or climbing on the roof and cleaning out the cars. Right? So but that is to say that 40% of the market still wants a more suburban, drivable environment. And so we don't want to ignore that 40% of the market. That's still a critical component of the population. But as I show you photos that look like this, and you say, "Well, the market is building it, so it must be that nobody wants..." Well, that's not true. We're not allowing it to be built. 60% of the market wants that. And so what we want to be able to do is set up local zoning and set up local projects to be able to respond to that market demand, but do it in a way that the community feels as though there are equitable outcomes. Is not to build these projects only to discover that they're all $450,000 condominiums. And all the people that we're talking about here tonight have been priced out. It's how do we build these neighborhoods so that there might be some $400,000 condominiums? But there also might be some $120,000 condominiums. Right? That might be possible. And I think that we can think through solutions to that. But what we've got to recognize is, and you're going to begin to see this more and more, especially near downtown South Haven and in these walkable neighborhoods, is as demand for those neighborhoods increase, price goes up. Right? Because there's a limited amount of supply. And what we just talked about, when there are 100 buyers for only 10 houses, the top 10 of those 100 buyers can bid up the price. Right? They don't really mind if it's $120,000. That's easy for them. And so what we've got to be thinking about is how do we increase supply at a rate that allows us to keep pace with what our goals and objectives are for the community? So we don't want to undermine the character of the community. And the master plan calls these things out. So the master plan has essentially said, and I didn't include that goal. This is for the city of South Florida. I didn't include the goal that talks about neighborhood character and preservation. Because I think that we all kind of carry that around with us every day. That, you know, what exists today is good generally. You would want to preserve some of that. But what I also want to talk about is, one of the goals is to identify neighborhoods where missing-middle houses may be appropriate. And missing-middle, for those of you that haven't been exposed to that term before, it essentially means all of those housing product types that were really popular prior to World War II. That were in most of our pre-World War neighborhoods. And those are duplexes and townhouses and fourplexes, small apartment buildings that were neatly grained into the fabric of the neighborhood. Where if you drive through some of those neighborhoods today, you can barely tell the difference between a two-family and a single-family house. Because of the way that the portion of the building is built, it's designed to fit into the neighborhood. It doesn't look like an onstrosity in the neighborhood. It looks like it fits. And there's not any magic serum in those building technologies. In fact, we've got a couple of architects who know how to do that very well. But what we've done over the last 30 years is to say, nothing other than single-family homes can be built in this neighborhood. Right? Because we want to preserve property value. Or we want to keep certain kinds of people out of this neighborhood. And we can't be doing those kinds of things anymore. Right? We can't afford it. It's not good for our communities. It's not good for our schools. There are opportunities to build more choice into one of your communities. And so one of the other goals is to build a diversity of housing options. And so that means some people might want to own in a particular neighborhood, and some people might want to rent. Some people might want a small condominium because they're just a single adult. It's important to know 40% of renters today are single adults with zero kids. So as we think about what kind of products do we need to build for those 40% of renters who are single adults with no kids, does it need to be 1,200 square feet with a two-car garage? If I'm a single adult, I don't need a two-car garage because I can only drive one car at a time. And I'd probably only need 600 square feet. Maybe I want 900 square feet, but if I can't afford it, don't make me pay. Design principles that ensure consistent character. So this gets back to what I was talking about earlier. We don't want to upheave the core fabric of these communities. We want to be additive to that core fabric. We want to say, what are the elements that make this neighborhood great? And what are the elements that could use some improvement? And how do we build on what's already great and build more of that? And so what I want to be clear about again is that there will be some change. But we shouldn't have massive amounts of change in some neighborhoods and no change in other neighborhoods. Right? If we can do an incremental amount of change in every neighborhood, we begin to move this football pretty far down the field. So this is going to be my last slide, I think, and then I'm going to have Mike come up. These are all examples of single-family owner-occupied houses. Every one of these images shows you a single-family house that is owned by the occupant. Only the one in the bottom right corner is legal in most of Michigan. Right? Most of our communities across Michigan tell you you cannot build any of these other single-family housing types. Because they're too dense, they're too close together, there's not enough yard area, they didn't provide enough parking spaces. And for those of you that are on planning commissions, I totally understand both the hesitation about these housing products and the questions that will come up about, well, you know, how do we write the code for this and ensure that it's a high quality? And that takes some work, right? This isn't just a, oh, you should change your zoning ordinance overnight. It takes some work to think about what's the level of character? Where are these kinds of products appropriate and where are they not? Right? Typically, it's where you have access to amenities like sewer and water. Where you have walkability in those neighborhoods. It's not for every neighborhood. But these are important housing products for us to be thinking about. So I'm going to have Mike come up, and we're going to switch over to that other PowerPoint slide. And he's going to walk you through some examples of projects that he's worked on over the last few years and some projects that he's got upcoming. Mike has been an architect for as long as I've been in this business. And honestly, a lot of my favorite projects that I helped to finance when I was at the MEDC were designed by Mike in his firm. And I hope that you're excited about some of the things that he shows us.
Good evening. I was told I had 10 minutes, but I dumped about 50 slides into this thing, so I have to do a speed thing here. But I think one of the things that I learned as a designer, and especially, I think it helped me get connected with Ryan, is we're a small part of solving this kind of challenge. But we're cognizant of all the other things that Ryan has just got over with you, what's going to help this. So we can design small things. The first house I ever owned was a Sears &amp; Roebuck house in Ann Arbor, Michigan. It was 1,200 square feet, three-bedroom. I thought it was the best thing in the world. I then somehow progressed up to a 3,000-square-foot house that had only one more bedroom than the house I had in Ann Arbor. And I thought that was the best in the world. And then I've since, in the last two years, moved back downtown. And my wife and I realized that we only need to live at about 1,400 square feet. And even that has an extra couple of extra rooms. So I think what's happened isn't just, it's just people think that there's a trajectory that's gone on in the last few decades that I think is starting to have to be rethought. Only because we don't, we just can't afford to live the way we kind of did in the '60s, '70s, and '80s and '90s. So I think what you're going to see here is just a few images of different things. Some of them aren't applicable. And I'll try to focus maybe a little more on those. Others are maybe not so much. But we are working with a lot of communities in the Michigan market. We're actually working in some other states as well. Because we've really tried to look at how our role as designers to help solve some of the challenges that communities have as it relates to getting housing as attainable to the residents. I don't know which one I have to show.
This is earlier in the time.
Yeah, that's what I did. All right, for the work. Top.
To get to 50, you'll have to go faster.
One thing that we're doing a few projects with Ryan, and I think one thing that we start with with Ryan is not, we don't actually talk about the house or the unit. We talk about the attributes of the community that we're trying to create. So I think that's important. All these projects, that's the narrative we start with is, what do we want it to be? How do we kind of create a sense of community? So we're doing a lot of housing that I would call infill. Some of them are larger projects, but they're all infill. So the projects that we do that are called kind of large refill projects are very limited right now. So we're usually taking and trying to infill parts of cities that are villages or towns that are vacant and they need to get some density, they need to get some housing to kind of respond to their specific challenges. So we're doing a lot of what I call mid-rise. In all of these projects, we tend to have to address the issues of scale and other things that the local neighborhoods are interested in. So even though this is housing for a group of individuals in the community, we're also putting it into a neighborhood that has already kind of got an established sense to it. So we really have to be careful of that. So you can see some of the things that we're doing in some of these housing projects where we're, you know, stepping back and creating volumes that are a little bit more sympathetic to maybe some of the surrounding architecture. We're doing a lot of adaptive reuse in some places. This is a block redevelopment that just received an American Institute of Architects award. But it included not just the housing, it included bringing a grocery into the neighborhood, a grocery store into the neighborhood. And again, that came out of talking about the sense of community first before we actually talked about the housing aspect. We've done some lower-scale stuff, so we're now starting to get into, these are smaller buildings, again, infill. Near the kind of projects that were done with, these did have a combination of incomes that were able to come running. A project that we did in Ohio, which was again, another mixed-income project. Again, infill. It took, we took an old, for those of you that are old enough to remember the Racks roast beef restaurants, we took an old Racks and a gas station portbound and added 65 round rooms. Again, a lot of infill. And one of the things I think that we understand as our role is, it gets back to the things that Ryan mentioned to everyone that cost, every square foot of a house costs money. And so how can we design things that are more efficient? Still very little. I think so we've looked at, how do we kind of create a 900 or 600 or 500-square-foot apartment that feels even better than a larger apartment? And how its relationship to natural light and how we kind of deal with ergonomics inside the space are very, very important. And it's a role that we feel greatly well contributed to solving the challenge. Again, smaller-scale infill in a historic neighborhood, trying to deal with just the whole sense of connecting at a scale that fits some of that surrounding housing. I'll scroll through a lot of these others somewhere. This is a project we're doing in a neighborhood in the Grand Rapids market that is, this was actually done as a result of a large community involvement. They wanted more density because they knew they had a housing challenge in their neighborhood, but they wanted it done in the right kind of way. So it's essentially a three-story building, 50 units. Again, a lot of the parameters of this project were dictated by the neighborhood. So we came in with a lot of our job done. And they said, "This is the kind of housing we want. We want it to feel like townhouses." And it's got these kind of attributes. And so we were able to kind of quickly move to a solution. We're doing some adaptive reuse. This is in the Battle Creek Market. We're taking old commercial buildings and increasing the housing stock in the communities by, so this is one of the old bay towers in the Battle Creek downtown area. This is an interesting project. And again, if you guys want to comment on any of these, please do. But this is an interesting project that we did in a Grand Rapids neighborhood that was the home of an old McDonald's restaurant. It was actually the first McDonald's restaurant in the U.S. Attorney Department Commission. And it included seven buildings. One large building was on the main commercial road that had a combination of retail, office, and housing. And then additional, I don't know if there's a pointer in here. Anyway, there were some additional housing types. You can see in the upper right-hand picture, on the upper left, smaller-scale housing. Those are actually mimicking the housing that is across the street, yet those are quads. So those are four units per building, yet they match the materiality, the scale of the housing that's next to it. The housing that's kind of on the opposite side of it are stacked flats. Again, trying to kind of relate to the scale of the housing that's across the street from it. And that also won a Neighborhood Redevelopment Award. So you can see, these are some other images of the, call it the stacked flat side of it. So really exploring unit size, how we can kind of get ergonomic to the unit to work more efficiently and still very, very little. These were the smaller, these are the quad flats. So you can see they look very much like a single-family house, but they relate to the scale of the neighborhood architecture. We're doing a lot of what's called workforce housing. So it's a housing type that is really looking toward individuals that do not have a lot of income but want the kinds of things that others have in the community. So these have all the amenities that the typical apartments have in the Grand Rapids market. They've got washing and dry for the units. We started to have early discussions about, again, attributes. And some early ideas were, well, let's have communal laundry so not everybody has to have that. All of a sudden, we started to kind of erode a lot of the amenities that a lot of the other residents in the neighborhood had. So we said, "How can we get everybody what everybody else has just a little bit more efficiently and get to a price point where they're going to be able to afford it?" In fact, this is one of the projects that, while Ryan was at the MEDC, was one of the last funded projects in the market. And it was because of how we approached it. So this actually, this project actually, I was inspired by. I stayed in a very small housing unit in Chicago for a few days doing a project. And after about the second or third day, my wife and I was with me at the time. I said, "This isn't a very big unit, but I really enjoy it. I love it." So I paced it off to the math on it. It was 420 square feet. It was remarkable. And the apartment was, had a lot of glass, had a lot of connection to the daylight. It was a different design, but it was very efficient and it was something that I felt very comfortable in. So we then kind of used that as inspiration to kind of start doing other types of units like this in other communities.
Are these for sale units or rentals?
Rentals. We are also, again, there are a lot of challenges across the state. We're doing some projects. Most of these are in near-urban applications. So the one on the left is in Grayland, Michigan. Getting back to one of Ryan's comments about how we can help, they have very antiquated zoning laws. And so instead of us getting a per-project change to the zoning laws to getting a per-project kind of allowance, they actually came to Grand Rapids, they visited the project that I showed previously to look at smaller housing types. Because they had a minimum, every one bedroom had to be minimum 700 square feet. Nobody on the commission knew where they came from. It was there. So they needed to just understand what that meant, where the trajectory is with non-housing, and how they, in their roles as commissioners, could help solve it. So they rewrote the zoning laws. So both the density, parking requirements, and unit size have all rewritten prior to us even putting our application for that project. And it was instigated by that kind of thinking. The one on the right is in Mount Pleasant. And again, it's very similar in nature. These are smaller format units, very similar to what we saw in that first one. These are all, the one-bedrooms are about 500 square feet. The two-bedrooms are about 700 square feet. And the studios are about 350 square feet. We're doing some adaptive reuse. The project on the right is at Lansing. It's an old worship, place of worship that will be redone into, how many units? 32 units? 32 units? Another project that we're doing in Boyd City. Boyd City, so it's actually, these are going to be wonderful units at 80% AMI that are going to have views of Lake Charlotte. And it's funny because a lot of individuals in that community were around, some of them were happy because they were in every use. And why can't this property be used for something better than that? And we were challenging them to really rethink how they looked at solving housing challenges. Smaller infill. This is a project that we're doing in the Jersey Shores. In New Smaller infill, this is a project that we're doing in the Jersey shores, in New Jersey. Again, just, we've got to deal with some things a little differently there, but we came up with a townhouse plan that was very efficient, fit on the site, was able to maximize the number of units that we were able to get out of that piece of property. We're also doing a number of detached single family. It's still, in many communities, felt to be a very important housing type to have in an attainable fashion, so, but really rethinking it. It goes back to what I said earlier about my 1200 square foot Sears Roebuck House. We're looking at housing that is down to 700 square feet for a one bedroom or two bedroom house, up to the maximum we're looking at, like house, probably 1400 square feet. And when you start to design that world, 1400 is enormous. There's so much you can do if you design it efficiently. We're also looking at how we build them. So it's not just a design, and there are a lot of partners that are out there, whether they're builders or supply companies, that are looking at how they can get an advantage and how they can bring product to market less expensively. So there's a company out of Traverse City called Infastos, which just started in Traverse, they've now got a facility in Grand Rapids and they're opening one in the Detroit area. But they're helping us work through the designs with us, so that as designers, we know it's a more efficient way to live a house, as well as finding the product delivered. So the one thing we're not doing is we're not into kind of more gimmicky or trendy tiny homes. We're really still looking at livability in a normal, kind of more average sense. This is an interesting project that we, it started out as a rental project. It's a block infill, so there were only two homes on this site previously, and we designed for 18 units. So we've got a combination of townhouses, stacked flats, and they were on the market as rentals, and they've since converted in the last year as wholesale units. A very successful project, it was an early project in redevelopment of the west side of the Grand Rapids area. Again, small, efficient, but very livable, walkable to grocery and other amenities. So just getting into the ergonomics of housing and what's important to individuals. These, Ryan kind of mentioned some of those guys. This was again, two, a two-house site in a historic district. And the two, I mean, on the right side of those two houses, there are actually quads. So there are four units in each of those two. They exactly meet the scale and dimensions of the housing that's adjacent to them. And then the two on the left are just around the corner, reactivating kind of what's an alleyway into kind of more of a street. So we used that technology to kind of reinforce kind of livability along that corridor. Also looking at other townhouse type units. We're now starting to get into sites that are not purely urban in a sense. And so we're looking at how do we kind of solve this in either a near neighborhood or even getting in a closer to suburban type situations that still have an density. So townhouses stacked many times to two or three stories tall are other housing types that we're getting into and really starting to look at how we create the right kinds of attributes for these spaces, both in terms of the community but the units themselves. This is a project, this is one of the few larger, I would say, greenfield projects that we're doing with Ryan. And again, this conversation started with attributes, qualitative kinds of things versus housing types. But it's got a lot of diversity in it, both in terms of the types of housing that are available. It's got scalability within it. So we've got, for instance, the single family detached. You could either have a garage, you don't have to have a garage. You can have a garage that has an accessory dwelling unit attached to it. You can have a house that has a basement. You've got options that allow you at that, at your position at that time, to be able to kind of start with something and then grow over time without having to leave the neighborhood to do that. But it's got its own sense of retail as well. That's the luxury we have with a project of this size. And again, I probably can flip through these pretty quickly now. But we're doing a lot of these types of projects. This is a project that we're working on with Ryan. We're helping re-educate, we're helping educate the planning commission on how to potentially rewrite, relook at how their density is established within their community. They've got again, the minimum sizes of units, which again, nobody seems to ever know where that came from, but some work came from somebody that thought they needed to have 800 square foot one bedroom unit. So just getting a little more density, getting more residents in the community so that they can enjoy the community and enjoy their sense of community. So I think that concludes it. Anyway, your feedback is important. What kind of resonates well with what you saw will be stuff that we're going to be listening to during the talk. Yes, sir.
Did you guys do, I think it's 16th and Central, the small homes, I think Jubilee Industries? Or no, Jubilee Industries, actually?
We did not do that, but I'm familiar with them. I know the builder that did them, and I went and looked at them. Those are 500 square foot, one bedroom homes, so those are, but again, they're working and they sold immediately, so. Yes?
Given that the population is getting older, how do you deal with handicap accessibility?
Many of the projects that we're doing have handicap accessibility. Even the one project that I showed earlier that had the, let's see if I can get to that quickly. This project here, which I have a pointer, but in the picture, the way the building that's on the top middle from the street, it looks as though it's townhouses. So it's got a couple of steps, just so you've got a little bit of a, but from the rear, it actually has a barrier free entrance. So we're addressing it in different ways, but I think accessibility or accommodating diverse types of populations is very important. Yes, sir.
You mentioned zoning as potential barrier, you mentioned density. This may be a question mark for Ryan, but in the communities that you've worked with that have gone through the RRC process, are you finding out that they are easier to work with from the start when it comes to any kind of zoning restrictions or issues, density, et cetera? Or are you finding out that there's still gaps from these RRC communities?
Do you want to?
Again, sure. I mean, I've worked with some RRC communities, I'm interested in your answer.
This is the pricky is my question.
I think it is. I think the interesting thing, I'll tell you. I had an interesting experience this year where I presented our Boyd City project on a Monday evening. And then I traveled to Grayling on the next evening. And two very similar projects in a lot of ways, solving very similar challenges both communities had, but different conversations. And I think it depends on the attitude and the complexion of the commission that you're dealing with and what their direction is and what their priorities are. I think both of them had very, very strong desires to solve their housing challenges, but different attitudes about certain aspects. So whether it was parking, in this case, it was parking. I think, I think that makes a big difference. I think most, what we're finding is most commissions are very, very receptive. And in fact, the Holland Township one that I referenced earlier, we're inviting them to come look at examples of things that do work and things that can show them that a 500 square foot apartment actually lives really nicely. At Grayling, their commission, most of their commission came down to look at that. That was impressive to me for them to take that time out of their, obviously, their busy schedules and volunteer schedules to come down and look at some of that, to help convince them. So it wasn't just me trying to convince them, it was them seeing it in the real, that helped it. But yes, I would say for the most part, we're seeing good progress with the governmental units.
Thank you.
Are some of the zoning restrictions people, occupancy? I mean, is it like, okay, if you've got a 500 square foot apartment, you can only have one person? Is that part of it?
I've not experienced that. The challenges, here are some of the challenges that we're running into. And again, a lot of the communities that we go to have water and sewer, so the density question could be, that very well comes out of the picture. But even in communities that use the fact that it's well accepted as a, I guess, reason that they need larger lots. And when you have larger lots, you tend to build larger homes, I guess, where people want to build larger homes. But we've got solutions that can solve it. We can look at communal well septic. Again, it brings another player into discussion, you've got the health department or the county, but they work, we're using them in other areas, so that you can get back to a 4,000 or 5,000 square foot lot in a community that's served by, that's not served by water and sewer. But sometimes it's interesting that they haven't even given that much thought. And I think, again, it's back to the individual, that county health department individual, if they don't have good experiences, or they've had bad experiences in one regard, they don't know what you can and they can't do, so the reference points kind of limit them. But we've done a lot of kind of convincing individuals or governments or individuals in government that there are ways to solve this. If you really want to solve it, then most of them are pretty receptive to some of the different things that are out there that help solve it. Yes, Your Honor.
First of all, I just want to say, welcome back to town, Mike. So if those of you are not aware, Mike and Integrated Architecture are the creators of the wellness center here in town. So if you'd like to see the old village market building?
Right.
Turned into something new and exciting, just examples of what they can do to an old space. So just welcome back, it's a great project and it's exciting.
And we are doing some other housing. We're doing some single family homes just south of this property that we're working at today. And then we're doing some, we're doing some planning for housing in the CDB area.
All right. Okay, sweet. Thank you, Mike. Can we flip back to that? So we've had your attention for about an hour, and that tends to be about my limit before I start thinking about other stuff. So one of the things that we had talked about at the beginning was, do you want to break into small groups? Do you want to talk back to us about the things that you've seen and what you like and what you really don't like? What's appropriate for the community and what's not appropriate for the community? By show of hands, how many folks would like to be in small groups and to chat with your neighbors and then report out to the larger? A few, a few, okay. So I think what I'm going to do then is, I'm going to run through a handful very quickly of additional slots. We're going to do some direct feedback in this format. And then for folks that want to stick around and have a little more one-on-one conversation or small group conversation, we're going to make that available still. But for those of you that are feeling like, oh gosh, I don't want to do that, I don't want to make you do it. So really quickly, I want to talk through just a couple of more things. It's important to get back to this idea that new construction is expensive, and that's why Mike and his team have gotten so good at being efficient with building design and minimizing the amount of square footage while maximizing the livability. But there are still opportunities to solve for more kind of cost efficiency. And it's not necessarily within the local unit of government's power, or even sometimes the housing authority, to solve for affordability in every case, right? We don't have those tools given to us, and we're just one player in the wheels of machinery that work around housing. But these are essentially the four tools that we have at the local level. We can plan, and the city just adopted a new master plan, which does a lot of the important things that we've talked about tonight. Next is zoning. It's how do you actually codify and add teeth to those ideas that are espoused to the master plan? How do you begin to move forward on some of those goals and objectives? So that that plan doesn't just sit on the shelf for the next five or 10 or 15 years, but you're actually implementing the goals and objectives of those plans through the zoning ordinance. And also, how do you begin to implement some of those goals and objectives by the investments that we make as a city or as a township, as a community at large? What are the things that we want to be investing in? And how do we make those investments? So as you think about investments, what we're probably not talking about is the city becoming a developer, right? It's not a great role for a local municipality to take on. It is a good role sometimes for housing, but that's the role that you want to be in. But as we think about investments, we think about infrastructure, right? So those are the things, the infrastructure, the sewer and the water and the sidewalks. Is it walkable? Is it bikeable? Can I get on a bus, right? Are all of those things readily available and at the fingertips of the private sector or nonprofit developers to come in and take advantage of? How do you make those kinds of investments? Can leverage all kinds of additional development over the long run. And we've done analyses, and the Strong Towns organization has done analyses of communities that have made smart investments in infrastructure and seen significant gains in both taxable value and affordability simultaneously. And in those same communities where they have neglected their infrastructure, we see decreases in taxable value. And so thinking about those smart ways to invest in infrastructure. And then lastly is, oh, I got to talk about first. Lastly is abidance or incentives. And I've got a slide coming up in just a second that will kind of walk us through what some of those tools are. But local municipalities have a lot of tools at their disposal. And to be honest, the city has a few more tools than the township because of the way the legislature has structured things at the state level. And I'll tell you about those. But before we get to those, I want to be clear that having zoning regulations in place is important. What I'm not saying is you should throw out your zoning ordinance. As we say, gosh, zoning is broken, you should fix your zoning. What we're saying is, it's outdated, right? We've got provisions in place that we can't justify anymore based on market conditions in certain neighborhoods. In certain neighborhoods, your zoning may be perfect. But in other neighborhoods, I'm willing to that, and we can make some positive changes for the better. But when you make those changes, what you want to be doing is allowing for the market to step in and solve for needs that exist in the community. And ensuring that you're getting the level of quality and character that the neighborhood expects, right? So here, what you're seeing is brick buildings with a little car parked in between the buildings. And that's an innovative solution that I wouldn't have thought of as a former planner and zoning administrator. I wouldn't have thought that somebody would park their car that way. And I may have written a code provision that made that impossible, right? Because I didn't think of it. And oftentimes, that's what happens, is we have staff or a consultant that writes all of this great language that seems good until a clever designer comes in and says, well, I could have solved this problem in a pretty efficient way, but they boxed me out with the language. And so thinking through, how do we regulate for character, but not stifle innovation? Another example. So I think this is one of my last slides. And these are all the tools that the city has at their disposal. And it's not important to memorize all of these or to write them all down. But what is important to note is that you've got almost a dozen tools that we can use to influence price. And these tools are all negotiable, right? So we're not necessarily going to say that the next condo developer who wants to build half a million dollar condos should have this entire suite of tools available to them. Maybe there's one that could be appropriate in the right context, if you're getting the right product. But there may be a developer that steps up and says, hey, I know you need some middle class housing. And I know you need some workforce and attainable housing, and we want to provide that. But currently, the tax environment plus the cost of construction makes it really hard for us to build that and still keep our shirts up. And so if the city is willing to say, okay, we'll negotiate with you, let's talk about some of the tools that are available. Let's talk about the level of character that we want in your neighborhood. Let's talk about the unit prices and how long we're going to ensure that those are affordable and who they're affordable to, and how we're going to review and evaluate all those things and establish whether or not we're on the right track. If you come to the table and say, all of these are available to you, if we can get the product we want at the end of the day, you'll have a lot of opportunity with local developers to say, I want to build, right? Builders want to build. And a lot of times, they want to build because that's their trade and it's their craft. And making money is part of the equation, but not the entire equation. And so the question is, how do you help them solve their cost problem? And how do you ensure that you're getting the product that you and the community and the neighbors around it really want to see? And you're getting the kinds of neighborhoods that allow for housing choice and housing price at all levels. And so really, the way that we do that is we first talk about what are our core values? What are the things that we want to solve for? What are the constraints that we know need to be in place? There are certain neighborhoods where you're not going to have 10-story buildings, right? A 10-story building might solve some problems, but there are probably some neighborhoods where that's just out of the question. And so you put that constraint on from the very beginning, so that you don't spend a lot of time talking to a developer about 10-story buildings. And there will be other things like that. And then you want to establish metrics of accountability. You want to say, what's the developer responsible for? You want to say, what's the developer responsible for? What's the municipality responsible for? How do we measure those things? And how often are we going to look back and say, are we doing the things we said we're going to do? Is the developer doing the things that he or she said that she's going to do? And are we all following through with our obligations? And if not, then you've got to refine that process. And that becomes kind of a reinforcing feedback cycle. And the more positive experiences you provide to developers, the more they're going to want to do those kinds of projects in your community. Very often, it's not price point that drives developers. It's how quickly can I get this done? And can I rely on the people that I'm working with? And so, to the extent that the local municipalities can say, we're reliable, and trustworthy, and dependable, but we have high expectations. Those are the kinds of communities that developers will say, great. Tell me what your expectations are. I'll do everything I can to meet them. If I can't meet them, I'll tell you why I can't meet them, and we'll talk through those things. It's the bad developers that will avoid you in those circumstances, right? They'll say, ooh, they've wrapped their act together. I don't want to mess with it, because I don't think I can get through the gauntlet of things that they want me to do, and so I'm going to walk away. But if you're clear, and concise, and consistent, good developers will say, every day of the week, I want to work with you, because I know what you expect, and I know I can deliver. So, this is my last slide for tonight, and then I want to hear from you. But I would advise you to think about, as you tell me, what are the kinds of buildings that you want to see? What are the kinds of products that you want to see? I'd advise you to think about building buildings that are adaptable, that solve the needs for today, but that also solve for future needs that we can't quite forecast for tomorrow, right? And that's the beauty of our historic buildings downtowns, is that those buildings were once grocery stores and apartments, and then they became offices and insurance agencies. And now they're becoming condominium units. And those buildings are highly adaptable. We've now gotten 120 years out of some of the buildings downtown. And we will likely get another 100 years out of those buildings. And when we talk about affordability, if those buildings are well-maintained over time, those are affordable units, right? Today, because there's such a price premium on location, they're out of the price range for a lot of us. But if we had more of those buildings across town, if we built more buildings like this on a regular basis over the next generation, and the generation following that, and the generation following that, we're going to tend to see more opportunity for housing choice, and variety, and affordability across the landscape. So, with that, I really want to turn it over to you all, to tell me, what did you see tonight that really kind of rubbed you the wrong way? And what did you see tonight that you feel like we need to explore more deeply with some of the sites we're going to look at with the community at large? Yes, sir. Do you want to come up, or? Up to you. However you feel like being with the group.
Don't worry, folks, I won't talk that long. I have to leave, so I wanted to make a couple of questions.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah?
Just for the record, if you just say your name really quickly, it'd be helpful.
You've got Jim Markku, 15 Chippewa.
Thank you.
In the city. Your first question, you know somebody who's struggling to find housing they can afford in the community. I do real estate part-time. I think there's a few other realtors in here as well. I don't think there's a realtor in this town that doesn't get phone calls from teachers, or restaurant workers looking for a place to live. My son owns restaurants in town. Unfortunately, they all end up out in the country, which, and then they're late for work. Teachers, in fact, we've got an apartment building of three-plex in our neighborhood that Ken has a list, as long as my firm, of teachers, mostly single, who would like to rent there. And they're very, very inexpensive. They're very small, 400 to 650, you know, square feet. So, teachers, restaurant workers, very important to this community, because we are, you know, we are very dependent on the tourist rate. And it's also important that we stop and think about the teachers who are really educating our kids. One of the most important factors to consider when designing your housing models? First of all, I think your presentations were great. And I think you're spot-on with what you're looking at, what you're trying to design, as long as, and this is the answer to the second question, you know, what are the most important factors? There's three things. Affordability, affordability, and affordability. We've got to make it affordable to folks. I don't know, I could go on and on, but we'll let other folks talk. But I got it off my chest.
Thanks, Jim. Yes, sir.
Um, I can stand. I'll just come on up.
Come on.
Just come on up, like he did. I'm Matt Goodwin, a resident of Wardline. And I've had a couple of thoughts while I was sitting here. Watching the slides is based on what the manager said. You said in one of your slides that the average value, or something like that, in South Haven was around 200,000. And then you said, today's starter home in South Haven was about 310,000. And that's about 1,200 square feet is what I see on the slides. Now, in Wardline, there's a lot of new houses that's being built, like around St. Joe Street area, Upper Ward Street area. Yes, Center Street. And I wonder, how many of those homes are for people that don't live here? I know a couple of years ago, that it was a big thing about people building homes that didn't live here, and they were using them to rent them out. I know that was a big deal here in town. And now we're back dealing with the same issue with this location when we met a couple of years ago, also, with the development of this. So, that leads me to a couple of points. First of all, where are the jobs for people to be able to afford these homes? I don't see many here. You've got to have some type of conglomerates, or some type of corporations, for people to afford some of those numbers that you threw out there. It was a number that you threw out there, $25,900 that a person makes, their rent should be 650. I don't know who, that sounds like a part-time job to me. Somebody that makes less than 26,000, I don't see that you can afford 650. I just don't see it. And I see some of your designs, your designs are real nice. And the only way I think that some of that can be solved is if we work together as a community. And I think these are some of the resolutions that I would propose for the building structure to be made cheaper, is if we use people that go to school for trades. Why not use them to help build? People that have got in trouble with law enforcement, you know? Give them some type of leniency to help build the structure. People that volunteer, I know people that work with Habitat for Humanity, and things for that nature, people that volunteer to bring the cost of the construction down. And I think that will help to keep the rent down. If we're all about community and working together, I think this is the way to do it, if we work together. And what I'm saying, you take what you want to take for. These are my ideas, these are my thoughts for us to come together, because that's the only way we can do this, if we do it together.
Oh, thank you. Just dropping everything. Thank you. We've got a couple.
Just a comment on the last paper, good job. One of the points you brought up was income, oh, Mark Amber, 800 Indiana. One of the points you brought up was income. And you started off the presentation with something like 56,000 is your median income. Of course, we count for South Haven, the median income is 46,000. So, you're probably looking at bringing in a population from outside to provide some of the, to be available to purchase those homes or to rent. We have one. I guess the concern I've got, several of them. One is, I share a property partner with a property question. So, some of the things with drainage, this infrastructure, and the things that go into it. I know utilities are part of it, but my yard floods every spring about a foot deep, and a lot of that water is coming out of that property. Couple of other things on my mind were energy efficiency. If you build them energy-efficient, and you don't cheap out materials, you don't cheap out insulation, and you make them more durable, I remember from your last slide that you showed, as far as, you know, brick or hard surfaces, things that will be around for a long time, that also helps reduce the long-term costs. From a maintenance standpoint, and they tend to look better long. I guess, energy efficiency and durable.
Nice. What's other?
And, you know, infrastructure support.
Julie London, 612, I have two unrelated questions. One is, I know somebody here knows what proportion of South Haven is empty during the winter. I don't know it off the top of my head. But I just wondered, once that process of non-resident, mainly non-resident houses happens, have you ever seen that reversed anywhere?
Only under unfavorable conditions, right? So, we tend to run into Fifth Amendment issues, which is the takings clause, which means if you're afforded a particular right that runs with the land, and then the local unit of government says, you no longer have that right, which in this case is a seasonal rental. You run into a potential violation of the Fifth Amendment, which is a takings. And so, to eliminate that right from a piece of property is very difficult. There are some communities that have done it in successful litigation, but you've really got to be prepared for that process. Now, the other thing that I'll say about that is, where there is control over the site, or the local municipality has the ability to step in with incentive, like that list that I showed you of the abatements and incentive tools, you have the ability to ask for all kinds of things, right? So, and it's voluntary from the developer's side. So, if the local unit of government currently owns the property, and is going to convey it to a developer, you can attach deep restrictions, which would eliminate the ability to rent those units out on a seasonal basis. Or you can limit a percentage of those units. Where you could say, you can only rent out a third of your property, right? There's all kinds of things you can do. If a private developer owns their land, but comes to you and says, hey, we want this tax abatement, and we want to get reimbursed for these expenses, and we need a low-interest loan. Once again, the local unit of government says, we think we might be wanting to play ball with you, but these are our terms. And you can again, limit seasonal rentals. So, that's a long way of saying, you probably can't put that problem back in the jar now that it's out. You can solve for it going forward on certain pieces of property.
My other unrelated question is, we have given, over time, abatements of businesses to come in, and sometimes it works, sometimes it hasn't. But has anybody ever given a, you know, like, someone's buying a house, a tax abatement to say, we want more young professionals? We want, you know, just give the people, give a president of corporation? I don't know if that's ever happened enough, but.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, here's the explanation. Right now, the city council is into just about year two of a commercial rehab district. And we're really happy to say that the tool is working. As you look at the Save-A-Lot redevelopment, that project has taken what was an abandoned, blighted, former grocery store, and it's being converted. And we would anticipate, probably in the next 30 days, new businesses will be moving in. Additionally, as you look at 335 Center, the three-story building that is nearly completion with move-ins of approximately November, that is another example of a commercial rehab abatement. As you look at Rockin' Road, the bike shop on Broadway, the Zoo family over the weekend was doing demolition of the former dry cleaners. I stopped by and watched. That's another commercial rehab abatement. And what's really exciting is, in the next couple of weeks, we anticipate the next commercial rehab abatement request in the form of the Hale Block redevelopment will be before city council. What does that mean for the developer? About 25 cents on the dollar. What does it mean for the overall community? We have made crystal clear that the expectation is, for a minimum of that 10-year abatement period, that there will be absolutely no short-term rent. That the people, as they seek to create new apartments, that they understand that those are going to be long-term rents. Now, the first project, right out of the box, was 335 Center. And that's a market-rate apartment development. That means they can charge what the market will bear. But they cannot rent for less than 28 days at a time, that they have to be seeking year-round tenants. And that's the first. We anticipate that the three-story building at the corner of Center and Quaker, the former Hale High Rise, we anticipate that it's going to be the next market rate. And it's doing exactly what this was intended to do. They are going to compete with 335 Center, and they will have yet lower prices being offered. This is exactly what was envisioned two years ago as the commercial rehab district was created. And we're just grinning ear to ear that that tool is catching some traction and working. So, to answer your question, yes, that tool is available. To answer your question further, is it available for individuals putting up houses? The answer is not yet. And through this process, we want to engage the community about taking a look at former planned unit developments, and trying to create some new tools that could be made available to the developer and the homeowner to try and get more housing available for people that want to live here year-round. Have I answered your question now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Odlin, 1662077 Streets in the township. Could you back up to that slide? It was on tools, abatements, and incentives. Now, as I look at all of these, they're all financial, that really help drive down the development cost of that property. And as you said, in a very articulate way, the developer doesn't eat those costs. They pass them on in the form of rents for the price of the housing. As I look at this list, I don't see anything in there. And maybe it's embedded on water and sewer hookup fees. That's a problem. I know from personal experience, having just checked on this recently, to convert my home from well and septic to city water and sewer, it's an enormous problem. And if you build that in, to every house that's being built, and if you talk to a developer, and he passes those costs on, what happens? The price goes up. So, the question to Ross and to Brian is, what can we do? Can we build incentive in?
I'll hang out here. The answer is yes. Come on, it's still kind of funny when I just say yes. 335 Center is a good example of trying to essentially layer or cascade the available incentives. 335 Center is the first multi-story, multi-family that we've done in the downtown in roughly 15 years. That is a project where we really pulled out every tool we could figure out to try and advance that. So, to answer your question about water and sewer, yes, if the circumstances are absolutely right. In the case for 335 Center, there is a brownfield plan that's associated with former site contamination. That brownfield plan went before the local brownfield authority, and they approved the plan. The plan includes incentives made available for water and sewer connections. That is not going to put money in the pocket of the developer quickly, but over the life of the plan, roughly, it will be 10 or possibly 12 years, roughly a decade, the development team will be able to reimburse themselves for the cost of the water and sewer. The nice thing for the local water and sewer authority is, they are still paying the immediate connection fees. They then have to perform, meaning they have to make their investments and abide by the plan's terms. But after that decade period, they'll be fully reimbursed for those water and sewer connections. That is a good example of how we are trying to recognize the high cost of water and sewer. But it is only available in the right circumstance. So, commercial rehab abatement was put together for 335 Center. Brownfield plan was put together to cover water and sewer. And then lastly, the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, stepped up with a CRP grant to assist getting that project off and running. Now, the beauty of that is, it has led to other interests from other developers.
Now, the beauty of that is it has led to other interests from other developers, and we anticipate you will see more and more of those projects beginning to take flight.
For new housing tonight?
For new housing, I'm talking right now about multifamily in the commercial, in the downtown. For new housing, if we look at the former Ever Park along St. Joe Street, that is a project that has been stalled out since the mid-2000s, the first phase, it seems, of new housing. They are living only with a brownfield plan. The development team has made crystal clear to the city's staff, to the city's leadership, that they are desirous for phase two, three, and four, to come to the table and seek additional abatements. And we have made crystal clear that there are going to be a series of expectations in the form of deed restrictions, in the form of essentially the type of product to be built. We're not ready to rule out exactly what that will mean, but we've made clear, if you need help in the form of water sewer, we've got brownfield. If you need help in the form of essentially the development cost, we're willing to go down that path, but here are the expectations.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Ryan, do you want to comment at all on the pilot?
Yeah.
Because Township has participated in pilot, in the apartments that's come out in our.
So pilot typically, it's referred to as pilot, it's a payment in lieu of tax. And a payment in lieu of tax is a deal where if someone is providing a certain benefit to the community, the pilot is a program that's available. The last good example of a pilot is Park Meadows, roughly 2006, give or take, mid-2000s. And that is a project that literally, the day they opened, they had a waiting list. So the beauty of the pilot is that it's not truly subsidized housing. They are trying to create a product that is between truly subsidized and market rate. And pilot is a tool that's available. Unfortunately, we haven't seen any new pilot requests since about 2006. That's not to say that we can't pursue more, but what we have seen is there's been a cooling of people coming to town to do new multifamily development. The reason we're here tonight with the Township Board and with the Housing Commission is we recognize to get that level of investment, we've got to work together. Property along Monroe Boulevard, it's not going to turn into apartments, but we are quick to remind people, we're three and a half square miles, but our utility is spread out to close to 20 square miles. From City Hall's perspective, if the Township gets the apartment, we're smiling. If Casco Township ends up with some new multifamily, we're still smiling. If Covert ends up with some new multifamily, we're still smiling because more than likely, that's going to help our local businesses, it's going to help our local schools, and on and on. Did I address her? Sorry.
It's actually you, Brian.
Go ahead.
When you're talking about sewer and water and now it's extended, especially up in Casco Township, do we work with the Township before we extend it to ensure that they have developed it as adequate a pavement and water until?
So, yes, but the reality is the Casco Township decisions were made close to two decades ago. So we are very much supportive of trying to encourage new business and new housing in Casco, but we're also very much supportive of trying to get people looking at the city as well as South Haven Charter Township. Casco is in a unique situation where they've extended utilities all the way out to, I believe, 107. And their local leadership has a different philosophy on some of their zoning decisions. And for City Hall, we respect their zoning decisions and we're not going to question that. But we have had multifamily developers who have come to us and couldn't make a project work in Casco, and immediately we say, well, have you looked at this site in the city? Have you looked at other sites in South Haven Charter Township? We respect the right of Casco and other Township Boards to make their own decisions. That's about as far as I can go with that answer. Yes, sir?
What's your future plans for the Overton site, north of Elkenburg and I APM?
We're going to refer to the guy who's a lot more dapper than me to start to answer that. The response to that is, we're taking your feedback here tonight to inform the first phase of design. We're partnered with Integrated to put together an initial preliminary drawing that'll get at some of the housing types that we've shown you tonight. We'll respond to the lot of comments that we've heard today, make sure that we're informing that plan with your comments we heard tonight. And hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll be able to come back and have conversations, first with staff and with the respective commissions, but then probably have some more public dialogue about what gets proposed. I'm going to follow up on it just real quick. So if you're not familiar with the Overton site, it's referred to that because it was the longtime home of the Overton factory. This is a good site in that it's roughly six acres. It is the definition of transitional. On one side, you've got, on the east side, you've got Elkenburg Park, on the west side, you've got the factory condos. What we know is we have made heavy investments as a community, not we, not the city council, as a community. We have invested in the form of demolition, we've invested in the form of site cleanup. And if you haven't paid attention, the DEQ and their contractors have been out there for roughly two years. If you didn't know this, that is an $8 million investment, as it sits there today, to remove heavy metals and other chemicals from the ground. The beauty of that site is, as we get into the fall, the DEQ will be moving out of the site, will be left with essentially six acres of prime property. And this is the beauty of tonight, is we as a community can figure out what to do with it. We can just wave our hands and say, let it be market rates, and I'll put together a request or proposal and sell it to the highest bidder. We can work with the Housing Commission to try and chart out a path of how to keep it in the public's domain to ensure that we're meeting certain price points. Maybe it's a hybrid approach. The reason we're here tonight is to work with Ryan and his team to figure out a long-term plan for the Overton site that works to the neighbors, works to the overall community, and hopefully provides some real positive benefit.
Ma'am, you've been very patient.
Thank you very much. My name is Dorothy Sherrod and I live at 875 Calhoun Zoo Street. I've been a residence here in South Haven for over 40 years. What concerns me, number one question I have, is two years ago, we were here in the same place and we did some brainstorming about the Overton site. And there was a committee that came together of local residents that live in the Elkenburg Overton site area, and we wanted to see some development in that area. My question number one is, how much of that area is planned to be used for affordable housing?
So Dorothy points to the master plan. And if you haven't read the master plan, please do so. Please go to the back and look at the future site plans or the future land use plans. There are two separate plans that were laid out for the Overton site, and one of the first things that we did was pass those plans to Ryan and his team. We have to figure out how to incorporate some portion or all of that plan from the adopted master plan into the reuse of the Overton site. I can tell you that I'm not sure ultimately what will get approved there. The reason that we have the Housing Commission here today is I believe that there's the potential for a partnership. The Housing Commission since approximately 1967 has been delivering on its mission of keeping housing truly public, keeping rents affordable, and maintaining quality housing stock. And I'm hopeful that this board will agree that trying to partner for some or all of that site makes sense. But we're talking about issuing debt, we're talking about building utilities, and I would anticipate to build what is on that drawing, it's a multimillion-dollar project, and I can't speak for what their decision is. The reason that you have not seen something go off immediately is we still have DEQ working that site and working to clean up some of the past issues. And the exciting thing is, they're almost done. That site can now be actively marketed, and it can be purely private, or it can be a hybrid, or it could be purely public. And I'm not sure what the answer will be.
Okay. My second question is, we're here talking about affordable housing, but I have a concern that we need to be talking about employment that will provide jobs, that people will be able to afford housing. That's my main concern, is what are we doing to attract businesses to South Haven that will make it possible that a family will be able to find employment here in this local community? Because most people have to travel outside of South Haven to have employment, to be able to afford, to take care of their families. What are we doing here in South Haven to bring back the possibility of manufacturing and jobs that will make it affordable for families?
Excellent question. And the answer is every Friday. Every Friday, Mayor Smith leads a team between myself, between City Hall staff, between economic development staff, between the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, out into the city, talking to local businesses every single Friday for the past two years. And every single Friday, we go out and we talk to local businesses from big to small about what their challenges are. And last Friday, it was two small downtown businesses, but a month prior, it was one of the larger manufacturing businesses. And that is absolutely the focus of what can we do to help them thrive? And it's everything from industrial facilities, tax abatements, to helping them with electric upgrades, and occasionally it's the small things like fixing a storm sewer grate. But every Friday, we're out there talking with our local businesses, trying to figure out how to improve the market. And here's what I can tell you. If we said we visited 55 businesses in the last year, I can tell you with certainty, 54 have made the comment to him, to me, and to others, that housing is impacting their business, that housing is impacting their ability to retain their staff. We have a local business that is phenomenal at building fire trucks, and they talk to us constantly about the struggle in maintaining their staffing because people are driving program rabbits from Holland and even from Calhoun Zoo. And every time we are talking with them, they're less concerned about their ability to grow than their ability to actually maintain their staff. The very first industrial site visit that the mayor went on, and sir, I'm speaking out here perhaps.
I don't agree, jump off.
Correct. No. The very first site visit that we took roughly two years ago, Vice President in charge of Human Resources made the off-comment to him, and it had me cringing. This is a guy who's making a very healthy living working in the auto industry for a local company. He made the comment that he lives in St. Joe because he couldn't afford to live here. That's not what you want here, but it is what we're working to fix. Now, on that same industrial site visit, when we asked the CEO of the company, well, can we do better to keep it here? The answer was, build me a sidewalk. And for the last few years, we've been shaping every tree possible to get sidewalks built to long over. And at the last council meeting, we announced that we had spearheaded funding to finally get a sidewalk down the over. That's it. It's purely anecdotal evidence, I'm trying to answer your question, but you're asking to essentially summarize what have we done over the last two years, and I'm telling you, every Friday, we're out there talking to businesses. Thank you.
I think we're going to go maybe two or three more questions and then give you some time to Gail Patterson first.
Gail Patterson, Gladney, 914 Calhoun Zoo Street. And as you were mentioning, affordable housing for people who are not able to live here. Brian, you were just saying, that is also the case of seniors that I have talked to, and some of them are moving out of South Haven, they are on a fixed income. And so that's why I'm very happy that the Housing Commission is brought into this mix. And I'd like to just ask, how long is your waiting list for your senior applying?
Oh, it's John or one of the staff, if they can answer. Angelica, how long is our waiting list?
Waiting list for the family or elderly disabled of, uh, anybody here in H. P.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So I'll just, I'm, I'm sorry, like I'm yelling back, but you're sorry. So now flip hats. So my day job, I work at the hospital. And the first, I mean, the question that says, do you talk, do you know, have you talked to, do people connect? The question asks, do you know people that are having difficulty finding housing? I am told on a daily basis. That is, I was at Monarch yesterday, person I've known for years. He said, I make $50,000 bucks a year. I'm moving to St. Louis, I can't afford to live there, every single day. I work as a therapist in the hospital, I have 20 employees. I'm the only one who lives in the city of South Haven. My wife's a schoolteacher. Very few of her coworkers live in the city of South Haven. So while we have a lot of people who are working here, commuting out of the house, we have a lot of people who commute in. So just, we have to make sure we account for that workforce population. I agree, seniors that are priced out, absolutely, they're making too much, they're looking for these smaller units. I moved to town, I had, there was an apartment complex, remember Lake Crest Tower, that was it? I moved in there, that's gold. There's, we don't have it. If you are professionally moving to town, there is no place. So where are you going to live? Holland-St. Joe. You're going to set up shop there, you're going to start your family there, where you're going to probably stay, where your kids are going to stay. So it's that piece for us. I mean, I, again, I think you've got to look at that group that doesn't fit into the, maybe they make too much, that whatever 40, 50, your little group. We see it all the time. And I think, Jim, left or not, but you know, I think stability of pricing, I think not just affordable, but then keeping it affordable. So how do we build something, I know that NEZ concept is cool, because you've got to, you've got to lock in that housing price. We don't want to build it, it's affordable, and then we know what happens in this town. Up she goes. So, that's my.
All right, I'm going to do, gosh, all right, let's do two more. You're right here.
Coco Maple, 300 K O M A P O E, 1006.
1006, that'll be, I'll be very brief, just a comment and question really. I've been listening to affordable housing for some time now, and the words that are missing include eco-village, permaculture, sustainability, and living closer to the earth. Now, this is not for everyone, but there's a demographic of about 10 to 20% that is eager to live in a different way. So it's coming out of left field, thinking outside the box, but there's a lot of opportunity. This is something that we could start right away, soon. Very little money and no management from the city or municipality, but partnerships. So I'll be at, we'll be at the library coming Thursdays, three Thursday nights in a row. This poster's up around town, it'll be on Facebook, to discuss just the idea of how we might move forward in a really good way here in this city. We're also planning a Tennessee tour, so thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. This is going to be our last one, just say it tight.
Of everything I've heard, and of everything I heard from your last presentation, I think the only way, and you tell me if I'm right or wrong, the only way we'll ever have affordable housing, especially in this part of Ward One, where people who live here now, their children can afford to stay here and live here, is density. Don't you think, now, there's a question, that we have to have duplexes, triplexes, and row homes. We have to take better use of the land that we have and put more homes in it, because that drives down the cost per home. I mean, all these tools are great, but if we don't bring the cost down, Maude made a good point, I don't know if you're still here, but a lot of people can't afford $300,000 and not even two. But we could get the homes, that's a question, lower if we stuck three, four, five, or 10 homes in the same space that two would have been. And unfortunately, this weekend, yesterday, I was in Philadelphia at a funeral, and I had to go through a ritzy area of Philadelphia. On this side of the street were single million-dollar homes, on the other side, had to be a developed in no more than a year or two, row homes, which means every home is attached two blocks straight. And to me, it looked like they had diversity and regular people living there, not the wealthy from the other side. So the question is, is it all about density? And do we as a town have to commit ourselves to accepting we need duplexes, triplexes, and row homes?
So the answer to that is, if affordability is important, you have two options, right? It's either increasing density or increasing subsidy, right? And it could be a combination of both. But continuing to favor single-family detached is a recipe for more expensive housing. That's generally the way that the market is moving. Now, there are some good models that allow for you to build a handful of less expensive units. Habitat for Humanity is a fantastic model, right? It's a really great way to get less expensive housing. The thing that Habitat is not able to do is scale to the number of units that you need across the community. So if we needed 500 additional units in the next 10 years, Habitat would struggle to build all 500 of those units. If we had enough donors and enough volunteers in the community to build that many Habitat houses, that's another story. So I, my personal opinion is, yes. The response is, let's build a little more density. And then my question to the community is, and this is an ongoing question that we'll continue to ask over the next couple of months, is what's the right amount of density, right? Row houses, from my perspective, blend very well into single-family neighborhoods. So do duplexes and quads. But it's not my opinion that matters here, right? It's really how do we build product that hits those critical price points for the community and that don't disrupt the character and the fabric of the neighborhood in a way that unsettles the folks who have lived here for 20 or 30 years, right? And so it's finding the right balance. So here's what I'm going to do, I see your hands, and I saw a couple of other hands. What I'd like to do is essentially close out this portion. I want to hang around and hear everybody's comments, if you still want to have some conversation.
I think it's important that, you know, I'll play what Copeland said, that you need help and different things like that. Basically, what I think, what he was really trying to say, going along with what Dorothy Sherrod said, if you out price, you have to look at the average wages in this area. And that's going to help you drive where people can actually afford the true definition for affordable housing. And if you don't take a look at both of those, then you know, you can build homes that people can't afford and be back at square one. What he was doing is just trying to look at ways that you can drive this number down where it can really be truly affordable. And what I saw in the slides and what I'm hearing, it's still not affordable. Nothing to me, unless I'm missing something, that was shown tonight that gives me the confidence that we're going to have truly affordable housings on, houses on that property. And I think that's his concern, too.
Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
That's a bit aggressive, and it involves everybody here in the community. With low income levels, I get that. You know, one thing that drove me in the military is they can go down. And I see an old person working there that can't afford in Abbeville. So with this question, that one I have. What's going to stop, those who get low income levels up here, I'm in Fort Worth, it actually gives you, I get that. But what's going to stop from other individuals that are not desirable, coming from like Chicago, that just also associate with low access points here? Is the police department going to be able to handle those individuals?
Yeah, so I think the answer to that is, we'd have to build a whole lot of supply in order to start attracting people from other communities, right? So there's a shortage today. I think we'd need to build thousands of units and have a lot of vacancies before folks from other communities started to try to move here. We've got a trend that is headed in the wrong direction in terms of the amount of supply relative to demand. And I think we're a long way off from attracting folks from outside communities.
How many licenses, places, I saw?
I think rather than get into a back and forth, what I'd like to do is close out this portion. If anybody wants to have a conversation afterwards, I'd happen to do that. I don't know if we need to close out the Township Boards meeting, if we need to adjourn, if I should be spaced for that.
Close the township board meeting. All those in favor of closing the Housing Commission meeting? You can say hi.
Hi.
Thank you for adjournment.
All right. Thank you all very much for coming out tonight. If I'm going to hang around a little bit, we'd love to hear more.